Calamansi, a popular Filipino citrus, and Ampalaya, Filipino bitter melon, to create other luscious libations. Head bartender Kelso Norris, a soon-to-be mom, collaborated with the owners to honor femininity and the Philippines.
Comparing food dishes and dessert dishes and things from their childhood that they loved, and me asking, "Does this flavor work? You know, how would you use calamansi if you were replacing lime or lemon?" And then allowed a delicious trial and error.
A Kickstarter campaign helped launch Geneva in March. The names of 100 donors are respectfully etched on bar stools and artwork. The nonprofit group's search to involve Filipino-Americans also helped. In fact, the bar sits at CIPA's former headquarters.
And to have this place be reborn and revitalized as the most beautiful gin bar in Los Angeles is such a plus for our city that welcomes the diversity. Mayor Eric Garcetti is such a champion when it comes to women, gender equity, and small business diversity. So this is like a five-for, everything that you would wish for.
Visit Geneva at 3123 Beverly Boulevard in historic Filipino town.
We recently got an exclusive with Honest Abe Lincoln at one of summer's most unique experiences in San Pedro. Check out the war reenactments at Old Fort MacArthur Days.
You are about to see a full-scale war take place. Well, a reenacted war, that is.
It's the first time we've done it with pyrotechnics in it. You're gonna see explosions. A real WWII Sherman tank is getting into the battle. It's gonna be pretty amazing.
The WWII reenactment is part of the show at the old Fort MacArthur Days, and there goes one down. The event put on by the Fort MacArthur Museum in San Pedro helps visitors and reenactors to relive Fort MacArthur's heyday, which goes as far back as the Civil War era.
They try to be as authentic as possible, going with uniforms, weaponry, even sometimes eating and cooking the way that they do from the time period. So it's very fun, too, to learn about that.
All the equipment you see these guys with, that all comes out of their pocket. And when you step into their camp, you're stepping back into history.
I'm sharpening my amputating knife.
And if you ever wanted to know what it's like to get your leg pierced by a Native American arrow or maybe even have it cut off with the doctor's amputating knife, well, you'll get to see it at least as we watch an old-and-days doctor patch it up or not.
Miners, farmers would come by here for treatment. During the Civil War, the armies would have something like this just in the back of the front lines where the action was going on for medical treatment of their soldiers.
And look who's here. Good old Honest Abe makes an appearance, or, well, a pretend reenacted version of him anyway.
It's a walk through history. Instead of opening up a book and turning pages, you get to see it here. You get to smell it, you get to feel it. You can ask questions and get answers. And there's no fake news here.
Meanwhile, the battlefield is left littered with bodies. But it's all fun and games, as well as a look back in history without suffering the real ordeals of real war. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Turning now to Mexican Independence Day in Los Angeles, and it's never been this big. The city's Latino leaders helped ring in what may be their greatest El Grito yet with thousands in attendance.
Viva Mexico!
The cry goes out, the bell sounds. It's a reenactment of El Grito, a call to battle back in 1810 that launched Mexico's war for independence. L.A. City Hall celebrates Mexican Independence Day in a sea of green, white, and red.
I am incredibly proud of how well this program is happening. The crowd is phenomenal. It is the largest El Grito ever in the history of the city of Los Angeles.
Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez took the lead as organizer and even played guitar with rocker luchadores El Conjunta Nueva Ola, a slamming celebration mixing new with traditional.
I've never done that before. I was there to be an observer until I got pulled onto it. So I'm proud to perform on a short moment's notice.
I did not grow up in Mexico. I was born here in the States, and I'm a proud American. But my parents' heritage is so important to me. They're from the state of Zacateca. So I grew up going back to Mexico and eating the food and dancing to Mexican music. So to me, I can't help but to think all the sacrifices that so many immigrant families have made through centuries of coming to this country for a better life.
So what brought you out tonight?
I like to party.
Yeah?
Also performing Salinas Mas, a Selena Quintanilla Perez tribute band. Like the late, great Selena, more than 40% of L.A. city residents are of Mexican heritage.
In fact, my grandfather helped build this beautiful building we call City Hall. And he went back to Mexico, and I was born in Mexico. So Mexicans really have a bi-national, bi-cultural experience with the city of Los Angeles. And by continuing with this celebration, we celebrate our heritage.
LAPD Officer and, yes, Mariachi singer Chris Reissa also wowed the crowd, performing with Mariachi Arcoírez de Los Ángeles. They're the first LGBTQ Mariachi band in the world. L.A. city leaders call on citizens to support the immigrant community and all disenfranchised people during this divisive time in our nation.
To remain optimistic, to be forceful in our assertion of our rights as citizens of this country, but also to protect those who come here with hopes and aspirations to be the next generation of Americans.
Legendary Mexican performers Los Tucanos capped off the night's festivities. Over in Hollywood, a neighborhood gym with 78 years in the business got a special dedication. We're talking Pink's Hot Dogs and the official opening of Pink Square.
Nothing like songs from the '30s and '40s to give you that old-time feeling. Singing and dancing was on the menu for the day as Pink's Hot Dogs celebrated its 78th birthday.
Hot diggity dog, we're celebrating Pink's.
I don't care if it's Pink's birthday or half-birthday, or if it's a month's celebration, any excuse I get to come to Pink's to have a hot dog.
Yes, there's all the dozens of varieties of loaded Pink's Hot Dogs, but there was an extra reason to celebrate all that pink. Councilmember Paul Carretts and other city leaders unveiled Pink's Square at the corner of Melrose and La Brea Avenue in honor of the iconic Hollywood restaurant.
Pink's is such an institution in our community, and it's such a great American dream story.
My mom and dad, Betty and Paul Pink's, started Pink's. You know, it was during Depression. They had to borrow $50 from my grandmother, which was very fortunate to buy a pushcart.
Pink's has since grown from a $50 pushcart to a Hollywood icon.
Pink's has been featured in movies, TV shows, Food Network, The Travel Channel, and countless travel blogs, books, and top-10 lists.
Even Martha Stewart, the queen of high-quality living, goes for a hot dog now and then.
She pulled right in, waited in line 30 minutes, came to the front.
Martha Stewart.
Martha Stewart waited in line, and then she created her own hot dog. So we asked her if we could put that on the menu, and she said yes. The Martha Stewart Hot Dog is an all-beef stretch hot dog that snaps when you bite into it. And it's got chopped onions, chopped relish, chopped tomatoes, sauerkraut, sour cream, and bacon on it.
Which makes us wonder, why would people wait in line for a hot dog for half an hour or more?
Because it's a hot dog.
We can get a hot dog anywhere.
No, this is just, this is the best hot dog.
Yes, we've been coming here since we started dating. It's, what, 16 years?
Wow. So why do people wait in line for hot dogs?
They have really good customer service, and their hot dogs are great. And their fries are really good, too. So we bring the kids.
I like their chili hot dogs and their plain ones.
So when your mom says, "Where do you want to go?", you say?
Pink's.
It's on Food Network.
It's on Food Network?
Yeah, so that's how we've seen it.
I have been coming here since the 1960s and the 1970s, and it's the best hot dog in town. I love it.
Well, if there's a line, it's gonna be good.
No hot dogs, you say? You're a vegetarian? Well, that is no excuse. Pink's has regular dogs, turkey dogs, and veggie dogs.
When you go to Pink's, there's a lot of wows. And when there's wows, people hear about it.
A lot of wows and about 40 varieties of celebrity-themed hot dogs to choose from. Or maybe you will want to create your own wow and come up with a new combo of hot dog toppings all your own. Happy 78th birthday, Pink's.
I'm with Anna. The Veggie Dog is a big hit with Me Too. To celebrate, Pink's sold hot dogs for $0.78 for 78 minutes, with proceeds going to charity. It's a hidden gym that explores some of L.A.'s best stories. Gil Reyes takes us to a former police station that's now a shrine to LAPD's incredible history.
The Los Angeles Police Museum in Highland Park houses some of the most famous and infamous relics in department history. Our guide on this tour is retired LAPD Commander Bob Taylor.
This building was built in 1925, and it was known as Highland Park Station. And it operated as a full police station from 1925 up until late 1983, early 1984.
Now a museum, the memorabilia takes us all the way back to the LAPD's origins in the late 1800s.
This was a cowboy town. And so Levi's and shirts and cowboy hats and all that kind of stuff. So this was the first formal uniform that the department had. And so this is a picture of the officers and their uniform with their Remington rifles.
I noticed that the stereotype of the law enforcement officer with the mustache dates back...
Most of them, yeah, in the 1800s. You know, they had beards and mustaches.
Now, why is that? Is that just the look?
Well, I think they didn't want to shave. You know, don't forget, shaving, you didn't go, you didn't have an electric razor. You know, you can go get a Gillette razor.
And so the classic look of the mustached LAPD cop has flourished ever since. Now, before women could join the force, L.A. had city mothers. They helped care for homeless kids. One city mother, Alice Stebbins Wells, went on to become the first female LAPD officer in 1910, the first female officer in the nation, for that matter.
When Alice came on, they didn't have a uniform store. So how could she get a uniform? She made her own uniforms.
How fast did another female officer come after she became an officer?
Very quickly.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, by, you know, the 1920s, we had not only Alice Stebbins Wells, but we had the first African-American policewoman as well.
This is also a crime museum. One section dedicated to the 1963 Onion Field murder of Officer Ian Campbell. Two revolvers involved in the Onion Field shooting are stored here. Another room tells the story of publishing heiress Patty Hearst. Hearst was kidnapped by the Symbionese Liberation Army, then forced to join this terrorist group in a 1974 bank heist.
They found what the SOA members were armed with. So it included M1 carbines, M1A2 carbines, .38 caliber revolvers, 12-gauge shotgun, .45 caliber semi-automatic handguns. February 28, 1997, two suspects entered the Bank of America in North Hollywood. And this is exactly what they looked like. This is what they were wearing. We've outfitted two mannequins so that people can see what they looked like.
10 officers were injured in the North Hollywood shootout. The suspects were killed. Their bullet-riddled vehicle also parked at the museum.
And he was crouched down in front of this car, shooting at the officers who were located behind his car.
Right here?
Right here.
For anyone who's into LAPD history or the history of Los Angeles, for that matter, it would be criminal for you not to show up and visit this place. The museum is open from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., Monday through Friday. In Highland Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
How cool to learn that the LAPD was the first to have a female police officer in the U.S. Well, summer movie nights are a big hit in Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez's district. But you've never seen one quite like this.
The waters look calm and peaceful enough. But then, so did the waters at Amity Island until they weren't. Still, the setting at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center in Lakeview Terrace is the perfect backdrop for the first-ever Jaws movie night here.
I've been to a lot of movie nights, but never one in the pool. How cool is that?
We love Jaws. We're like big Jaws fans. We love sharks, so that's why we came. And this is awesome.
Oh, my gosh. We are so excited to see Jaws. Seriously, watching Jaws from the water. Like, what could be more awesome?
Councilmember Monica Rodriguez and her staff run movie nights at various parks in her district. But this movie night is super special. There's even original movie signage, a giant Great White, a smaller mechanical shark to grapple with, and more.
You know, this pool is the largest municipal pool in the country. And it's beautiful with a sandy beach. I wanted to create an environment where the community could come together and watch a movie like Jaws and recreate that environment from the movie.
Plus, with all the kids and then that lake over there, it's all a little bit suspicious.
Yep, you never know what lurks. But no one seems too bothered as they chow down on the free food and hot dogs and, of course, the pre-movie popcorn.
Do you think everybody should come to movie nights?
Yes, great. Everybody in the whole world!
Okay.
Then it's time to settle in, whether you pick the lounge chairs or the more suspicious pool water where things lurk, as Jaws bursts out of the water. Don't worry, it's just a movie.
I mean, come on. Who can resist the mechanical shark? Looking for something new to try out this weekend? Rashia Goel takes us to the Arch District for L.A.'s newest circus in town.
Hey, everyone. I'm at the Two Bit Circus Micro Amusement Park. And let me tell you, this is a place where fun meets technology. And it's right here in downtown Los Angeles. Now, it's got some of your old favorite video games, but you get the carnival feel all in a technological sense. And for VR lovers, well, there's something here for you as well. Come on, let's go take a tour.
50,000 square feet of fun. Two Bit Circus is the brainchild of co-founders Brent Bushnell and Eric Gladman, both who come from a tech background, and Gladman, who has also been a former circus performer. They say it's something that was needed in the downtown community and helps bring people together and socialize.
I toured around for many years. I was an acrobat and an aerialist and a fire dancer and a clown. And here, I get to do both of those things. I get to be a performer and I get to build high-tech crazy fun.
We've really focused on things that are social. Four-player standing games, four-player seated games, really getting stuff that's both fun to play as well as fun to watch.
And there's plenty to explore. A carnival midway, a 100-seat game show theater, games, restaurant, and bar. And here's something you won't see every day.
We have a robot bartender. His name is Guillermo Del Porro. He was completely custom-built for the single, sole purpose of getting people drunk. And he makes a mean motor oil martini.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and Bill Nye, the Science Guy, also came out to check out the fun.
This will be the new arcade, a place where you don't just sit at a machine by yourself, but you interact and do things together, where we can take the future and not be scared of it, but we can actually tame it and steer it to the things that we want to be, the things that we want to do.
What is this here if not the useful arts of entertaining ourselves? So people have taken STEM and they've made it into STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math.
Wow.
And for me, one of the coolest things was soaring and flying above the city through this virtual reality simulator.
So being on this makes you feel you're a bird, basically. Oh, I just crashed.
We love technology, and so we've applied a lot of the latest tech that we can find from different kinds of cameras and virtual reality to cheap sensors and have built our sort of modern take on the circus.
Two Bit Circus is a permanent fixture in downtown Los Angeles, but the neat thing is they have the ability to change up the games.
We've built this as the movie theater for interactive. So we're constantly able to change the content, keep it fresh, you know, both with the stuff that we're making as well as things that partners are making. So we've made this as a showcase for different kinds of game makers, from touchscreen games to console games, even board games and card games.
So step right up and try your hand at some of these exciting games, a modern circus right here in our backyard.
That's gonna do it for this Best Of edition. I'm Umeema Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. And check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Tahunga Spreading Grounds and other spreading grounds like it are critical for the future of the city's water supply.
LADWP and the Los Angeles County Flood Control District are working together on the Tahunga Spreading Grounds Enhancement Project. The improved spreading grounds will capture more stormwater and help enhance local water supplies. This facility behind me is roughly over 1 acre and could fill up to 10 feet deep. That is enough to supply 30 single-family homes per year. There are currently 20 similar basins of varying sizes at Tahunga Spreading Grounds. The spreading basins are like football-field-sized bowls that capture stormwater before they percolate into the natural aquifer below and recharge the groundwater. The project will reconfigure the current 20 bowls into 10 deeper basins, vastly increasing the stormwater capture capacity.
Every time it rains, we need more capacity to put that rainwater into the ground. But we need to get water into the San Fernando Valley groundwater aquifer, then it can become groundwater supply that our wells will pull out and treat and deliver to all the residents.
The Tahunga Spreading Grounds sit on a 150-acre site in Sun Valley at the intersection of Interstate 5 and CA 170, right on top of the San Fernando groundwater aquifer.
We're looking to really turn toward local water resources and not have so much reliance on imported water. And so part of the plan is to be able to produce more local groundwater, but we have to get water into the ground for the future.
By increasing the size of the spreading basins, the project will double the facility's recharge capacity on a year that L.A. gets the average amount of rain it usually gets. The spreading ground will collect up to 5 billion gallons of water each year to recharge the groundwater basin annually. This is enough water to sustain approximately 48,000 homes all year. LADWP also invests in smaller-scale, street-level stormwater capture projects that have multiple side benefits. They minimize local flooding. If there is flooding on the streets, they provide the community open space, and they generally beautify the community with native vegetation, open space, and wildlife. Beautification is also a part of the Tahunga Spreading Grounds Enhancement Project's overall objective. Aside from recharging the aquifer, the renovation will allow for passive recreation on community-open space.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, so we'll hold that. Now, Madam Clerk, let's move into the next section, six through eighteen.
Items six through eighteen are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body.
Mr. President? Yes, there are cards on six through eighteen, sir.
Then let's move on.
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to items called special presentations or public comment on items not on counsel's agenda.
Okay, why don't I recognize Mr. Blumenfield for presentation? And if I could get Mr. Englander.
I want to get the whole crew to come on up.
Come on, everybody.
Come on up, everybody. Gather around so you're all in the shot. You've got Mitzi over here. Okay. Got our star, who is adorable. Okay. Good morning, colleagues. It is my honor to again recognize the Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Los Angeles, or SPCA LA, but this time for their 141st year. I want to introduce my guests. We have Vice President Miriam Davenport, Roland Ransom, the Board Chair, Douglas Painter, Board Secretary, Anna Bustillos, Captain Caesar Perea, Officer William Campbell, Denise Jaxi, Venus Fung, Liz De La Rosa, Randy Sheriff, and Deborah Sutton, and of course, our very special guest here, who gets the name here, Mitzi the Adorable Dog. And I should say that Mitzi is available for adoption by the SPCA. So not only is Mitzi adorable, but is also potentially a companion, if you want to make it so. So SPCA LA is dedicated and committed to creating a better world for both people and animals. It was originally chartered in 1877 to end the abuse of buggy horses, you know, with the horse whip on the dog, on the horses. The SPCA LA expanded to include cases of child abuse and continues to offer dynamic programming to enrich the lives of underserved Southern Californians, such as youth from at-risk youth communities, domestic violence survivors, and juvenile justice, or juvenile violent offenders. SPCA LA has been serving the people and animals of Southern California for over 141 years and has a robust network of community partners, constituents, and supporters across the state and across the nation, making it one of the most effective animal welfare nonprofits in the United States and a voice for the voiceless in Southern California. SPCA LA is the only animal welfare organization in California that is not only an animal welfare organization, but has law enforcement. Their animal cruelty investigators respond to state, national, and international disasters. Now, there's no national SPCA parent organization or umbrella group that provides financial support to SPCA LA. Donations run programs and services, including their programs that deal with cruelty investigations, disaster animal response teams, humane education, and a variety of shelter services. As I'm speaking, I hear Mitzi talking. You want to put her right to the microphone? Donations run all of these programs. And SPCA LA has pioneered several programs through its humane education division, such as Teaching Love and Compassion, or their TALC program, that serves as a national model and are reproduced in major metropolitan areas across the entire country. These programs create and sustain a culture of empathy and compassion by shaping moral development and instilling positive attitudes toward animals. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, it is my honor and the honor of all the council members here to recognize and declare November 28th, 2018, as SPCA LA Day in Los Angeles. Yes, it's exciting, all right. Mitzi is excited, I can tell. Let's hope SPCA LA continues to create a better world for both people and animals. And now I want to introduce Vice President Miriam Davenport to say a few words. And Mitzi keeps talking. That's great, all right. Miriam.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much. And on behalf of everyone at SPCA LA, the staff, volunteers, pets like Mitzi, we thank everyone in this council, but especially Councilman, Member Blumenfeld, for making today SPCA LA Day in Los Angeles. You know, we are really only ever able to do what we do because of the support of people like everyone in this room, not just our elected officials, but of all Angelinos. As you said, SPCA LA is an independent nonprofit animal welfare organization, and we really thrive and are able to provide the services that we can provide based on your donations. One thing I am really excited to tell you is that in celebration of SPCA LA Day in Los Angeles, SPCA LA is offering pick-your-own-price pet adoptions at all of our pet adoption centers today only. So today, you can adopt a pet like Mitzi for the price that you decide, whether that's a dollar or a million dollars. Your donation will help to care for thousands of animals just like her. So again, I say thank you so much on behalf of everyone from SPCA LA.
Wow, that's amazing. So if I wanted to give a million dollars today and donate and get a pet, I could do it.
Just one pet.
That's good to know, everybody, anybody who wants to do that. Now, what would be an SPCA LA Day without a certificate to authenticate it? So please accept this token of appreciation on behalf of all of us here in the city of Los Angeles for the great work that you do in recognition of this day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rue, are you ready for your presentation? And Ms. Rodriguez?
Where's David? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. It is my great honor this morning to be joined by some incredible individuals in our community that is actually, it's outside of my district, and I want to thank Mr. Rue for allowing me to co-present this very special presentation this morning. We are commemorating an epidemic, and you know, we know a lot about epidemics here in Los Angeles as we continue to struggle with the challenges that we are facing right now and confronting as it relates to our homelessness crisis. But before that, the epidemic that has presented itself on the world stage was the AIDS epidemic and the AIDS crisis. And if not for the courage of individuals that I have standing with me today, we would not be as far as we have gotten in this community in helping to educate more members of our community, to assure that we make the important strides moving forward for our public health. And it is for that reason that today we have with us Reverend Kathy Cooper Ledesma, who is the elder in the California Pacific Conference of the United Methodist Church and has been the senior pastor at the Hollywood United Methodist Church since 2006. It was 25 years ago that, and many of you have probably seen the United Methodist Church, which is located on Franklin and Highland, they affixed two prominent AIDS ribbons that many of us, as we traverse through that very busy intersection, are always reminded of the importance of that conversation that began with their leadership of their congregation. And it was because of examples and the compassion of starting that conversation so many years ago that I, you know, am so grateful and honored to be joined by some of these very important civic leaders and religious leaders that have helped to change the narrative and to help make sure that we recognize that each of us have the responsibility to have compassion and having those important conversations so that we can change the dynamics in our communities. Serving as the elder at the United Methodist Church, Kathy is, has actually brought the conversation along with her congregation as it relates to talking about AIDS. While, it was back in 1986 when Lyle Loder was an active member of the congregation, shared that he was living with AIDS. And it was in '87 that Lyle was one of the first family members of the congregation to have passed from complications of the disease. Thirty-four others have since followed. On World AIDS Day on December 1st, members of the church fashioned the two giant AIDS ribbons that were, that are now attached to the tower of the church. And it was their example that I think has helped to exhibit the transformation of how we have conversations more publicly about AIDS, along with so many other members of the community. And it is for that reason that today we are commemorating the 25th anniversary of these ribbons being placed on the towers of the Hollywood United Methodist Church, and also on December 1st, the commemoration of 30 years of World AIDS Day. And so I'd like to thank Reverend Cooper Ledesma for her leadership and the leadership of this congregation that has really helped to change the conversation for all of us. And as we remember how important it is for each of us to have these important dialogues as we continue to experience some of the other crises that we face. It is through the leadership and their example that helps to continue to inspire the changes that we need to exemplify, and I'm so grateful to be joined by them today. I'd like to invite my dear colleague and friend and the council member representing this very important and wonderful institution, Councilmember David Rue.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, and thank you for bringing your very good and personal friend Reverend Kathy Cooper Ledesma. And also, joining her is many other senior and associate pastors, including Pastor Mark Stevenson, who heads the Toluca Lake Campus, which is also in my district, and he's also a neighbor council member for Toluca Lake as well. So thank you all for joining us, and many members of the church as well for joining us in the City Council today. The Hollywood United Methodist Church is a Hollywood institution and a force of good in Los Angeles, and a point of pride for Council District Four. In 1909, the early organizers of the Hollywood United Methodist Church banded together over a shared vision to build a sanctuary of hope in Hollywood. And for the next 110 years, that's exactly what they did. Whether it be services in both Hollywood and Toluca Lake, their advocacy for the poor, the hungry, and the forgotten, their leadership on homelessness or the AIDS crisis, the Hollywood United Methodist Church has been a constant champion of good in people and the unyielding force for faith in God and hope for humanity. Within the core values lives a statement that I found that was both simple yet powerful. It reads, "We believe that fear is not only force at work, is not the only force in the work in the world today. Fear, of course, is in strong supply as of late, in our minds, in our lives, and in our politics. Fear often speaks louder, it is often heard first, and unfortunately amplified by those who would use it for personal gain. But it is not the only force in the work today, in the work today. And it is not the most enduring, because we have right here in Hollywood another force at work in the world today." And she is working twice as hard, and that is Reverend Kathy Cooper Ledesma. Since she has taken the helm of the Hollywood United Methodist Church, Kathy has renewed the promise of the church with a vibrant, progressive, and loving spirit where all are welcome. She has doubled the congregation, tripled the number of children in the Sunday School, and organized mission trips to Mississippi and Haiti. As a member of the Los Angeles County Mental Health Commission and Hollywood Forward, as well as former member of LA Voice, the Bring LA Home Blue Ribbon Panel, and so much more, Reverend Kathy has been on the forefront of the homeless crisis for decades. And the former chair of the Community Advisory Panel of the LAUSD HIV/AIDS Education and Prevention Unit, Reverend Kathy has also been an unwavering voice for those affected by the HIV/AIDS crisis. This Saturday, as mentioned by Councilman Rodriguez, marks the 30th World AIDS Day, which has grown from a small remembrance of lives lost to a global day of action for cures, support, and hope. Since the first World AIDS Day, we have been more, we have seen more than 100 new drugs developed to fight HIV, 15 billions of dollars to fight AIDS in Africa, breakthrough in preventive medicines like PrEP, and a decrease in mortality rate for those living with HIV/AIDS. This progress is made and will be continued to be built by people like Reverend Kathy Cooper Ledesma, people who refuse to be overcome by fear, who hold on to their faith and who decide to be a force of hope at work in the world today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue. And with that, I think that was the most, the best introduction to a woman who has exemplified the kind of leadership that we are so grateful for in the city of Los Angeles, and that is my dear friend Reverend Kathy Cooper Ledesma.
Members of the City Council and Councilwoman Rodriguez and Councilman Rue especially, thank you so much for this honor. It is humbling to be recognized for doing something that you love, that blesses you, and is truly a vocation. And so on a personal level, I offer that thanks, and the thanks of the people of the Hollywood United Methodist Church for recognizing that we are a force of good in the community. But on a macro level, I want to thank you all for recognizing the force of love and compassion, of mercy and justice, the teachings of the Christ that we follow. But if you are a person of faith, of any faith or of no faith, you recognize that our mandate to love one another, to care for the neighbor, to care for the refugee in our midst, to care for those who are sick, to bring folks in from the streets, those are values that you are also commending and acknowledging this day, and for that, I give you thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and to all the pastors that have joined us here this morning. Thank you so much for exemplifying the kind of leadership and really the goodwill that we desperately need in our communities, and for being a partner to help educate our communities so that we can build more compassion and address the crises that we face on a day-to-day basis. Thank you. With that, I have some presentations here. For the Hollywood United Methodist Church. And of course, Reverend Kathy Cooper Ledesma.
Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we, let's take up item two, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. It's been five long years since we restarted the conversation on legalizing sidewalk vending in Los Angeles. After dozens of public meetings, hours of debate, and one piece of state legislation, we finally have before you an ordinance and rules and regs to create a citywide permit-based sidewalk vending program. Under these rules and regulations, vendors will have to ensure that they are not impeding the flow of pedestrian traffic or ADA access. They must be three feet from one another, maintain a clean area around their cart, have all necessary permits, and abide by a series of other health and safety regulations. These rules make sense. They are fair to vendors, to businesses, and to protect the public. And with today's vote, we're going to help thousands of micro entrepreneurs come out of the shadows and become part of LA's formal economy. I'm proud to have led this effort, and I want to thank Councilman Weezer for partnering with me, also Councilman Busciano for his work when he was Chair of Public Works, and Councilman Blumenfeld, the current Chair of Public Works. And I also am proud to have the support and the involvement of Councilman O'Farrell, Chair of Art and Parks, and the Council President for his leadership. But I really want to thank all of you around the horseshoe, because you all have provided the kind of input, counsel, and advice as this issue has moved forward over the past several years. I also want to thank the mayor and city staff, the CLA, the city attorney, street services, recreational parks, and others for the many hours of work they gave to put into this. And finally, we want to thank the street vendors themselves, who brought this policy back to us in 2013. Today is your day to celebrate, and celebrate, colleagues, we will. I invite you all to come out on the South Lawn to enjoy some street food once council adjurs. But at this point, members, I ask for your support, and I ask for your willingness to show that we are a city of inclusion and encouraging economic prosperity for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Am I on? Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to thank you, Mr. Price and Mr. Weezer, for your passion about this very important issue, and all of my colleagues who have played a role in making sure that we get to this day. It's had many twists and turns and a few curveballs, including the Ricardo Lara bill. We had thought at one point we were going to do the sidewalk vending ordinance, and then the parks ordinance would quickly follow, but we had to scramble and work with what we have with the new state law. And I also want to thank Chair of Public Works, Mr. Blumenfeld, for his input and work on this important issue. You know, street vending is part of Los Angeles' culture, and it's been that way as long as I've been here, since 1982, and it really does add to the rich diversity and really what Los Angeles has become known for, and that is our cuisine. And our vending community is a huge part of that, and I'm very excited that we are moving forward with a policy and a framework that will allow permitting for vendors. And I think it will take a, it'll be a huge step in helping these entrepreneurs to add a level of consistency, even safety, in terms of some of the conditions that our vendors have been relegated to live in. And it also will lift this sort of shroud of fear for our street vending community in terms of enforcement. And it's really wonderful that we're finally adding some regulation to this very, very important sector of the Los Angeles economy. I also want to thank all the vendors and all of the, those who specialize in sales and services of these wonderful food options across the city for being part of this conversation every single step of the way. You've really opened up your hearts and soul to us and helped us understand the importance of taking action in this way. And just know that my office will continue meeting directly with you without a third party, because we want to stay in touch with exactly what the street vendors do in my district. And we don't need a third party as a go-between between what my office does and what my office pushes for and supports, and you, those who are sacrificing your time to make sure that you have a livelihood to provide for your families. So I want to thank you for that. We have settled on a really wonderful list of conditions for parks, because I've always believed that we can do vending in parks as well. They have to be treated differently. We are, we are regulated by our city charter for parks. Parks are primarily for families and visitors, for park use as passive and active recreation. So we have within these guidelines that we've adopted flexibility that will give us the ability to make sure that there's not a cookie-cutter approach to vending in our parks, but we can have the presence that is logical, fair, and equitable in our parks as it relates to the uses in our parks. So I'm very excited about this permit system. I think it's going to shake out and work well, and there's enough flexibility so that we can make sure that it accomplishes just that. And lastly, something that I've fought for from the very beginning is these ordinances will be translated in Spanish for parks and for sidewalk vending. Why? Because we have primarily monolingual Spanish speakers in this industry. So we need to make sure that all of these rules and regulations are crystal clear for you. And that wasn't originally part of what would happen, but we will have that for you with this ordinance. So I think we're on the right track, and I look forward to this historic moment and finally getting to the place that we've been needing to get to for decades. And so, welcome to the official business community of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President? Bueno, primeramente quiero decir gracias a todos que están aquí hoy por este momento histórico. Nosotros vamos a hacer un cambio super importante y vamos a hacer un ejemplo para toda la nación como a vivir con inmigrantes. Y la razón que inmigrantes pasan por acá es, no es por welfare, no es por algo ilegal. Todos nosotros no queremos vivir afuera de la ley, queremos vivir legalmente, pero necesitamos oportunidades para hacer eso. Y por eso quiero decir gracias a todos ustedes personalmente, pero también a todas sus organizaciones y sus líderes como Cynthia Anderson, como Rudy Espinoza, como Juan que trabaja con nosotros diario, como todos sus líderes. Gracias porque este momento fue difícil, ¿no?, para estar aquí, porque empieza con una idea, ¿cómo se dice antagonista? ¿Sabes? We began this process with an antagonistic disposition towards street vendors. And so this is an important day because it demonstrates the capacity, Mr. President, of this city to listen to its people, to listen to its future. This began as part of a discussion around homelessness and the concerns people had about public safety, both in the parks and the adjacent sidewalks. And that was the beginning of the conversation, and it was a conversation about punitive actions that we could take to try to create. that we could take to try to create order and safety and security, which all of us want. But it evolved, and I want to commend also our City Attorney. It evolved to a conversation now of how we can do this in a way that's orderly, that gives respect to this activity, that recognizes that these are microenterprises, and that these microenterprises will soon, in one day, become greater than that. And so, we recognize that, and now we are in the process of creating this scheme, this conceptual infrastructure, so that this activity can be done legally, and done with respect to other businesses, done with respect to other residents of the City of Los Angeles, and mostly done with respect to those who are participating with a concern for safety and for the respect that's due everyone who's participating. And so I want to commend you for your leadership in allowing this process to move forward. My colleagues, initially, when we began this conversation, where the discussion was only about a penalty on street vending that could end up in a deportation of someone simply for selling an ice cream. And at that point, we said, this is too much, this is not just, this is not who we are. We are, in fact, a city that can embrace this. So I think of many of the great cities of our country, of New York, and of Philadelphia, and San Francisco, and others, where street vending is a reality and a characteristic of the greatness of that city. And so now, street vending here in Los Angeles, so many millions of people will come to appreciate the great cuisine of this city. And not just, I appreciate that it's done in Spanish, but it's going to be other languages. There'll be other languages that this is translated into, because there are street vendors from throughout the world, immigrants throughout the world, who will come here and to want to share their culture, their cuisine, what they bring to offer for this city for today and for the future. And so with that, I say thank you, Mr. President, but with that, I say thank you to those who were here to make sure that we could move this process forward, that no human being and no street vendor is illegal, and that we're all here with a certain dignity and with certain rights and with certain respects. And this ordinance is our first great leap to embody that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And primeramente quiero felicitar a todos los vendedores ambulantes, porque sin su esfuerzo no sería posible estar aquí hoy. Ustedes dijeron los primeros que queremos regulaciones para hacer esto posible, para es posible ser una vida en este gran país que tenemos. Y tenemos que respetar también a todas las personas, aunque primeramente no era tan fácil llegar aquí. Aquí estamos todos, todo el cabildo, todo el concilio para apoyarles a ustedes. Muchísimas gracias y felicidades a ustedes.
It's not often that an economy-based working in our shadows comes to us and tells us they want to be regulated. That's what these vendors did. They said, we want to be regulated, we want to come out of the shadows, we want to contribute legally to the tax system, we want to contribute legally to the economy. And what can be more Los Angeles than what they bring to us? They bring to us entrepreneurial spirit, they bring to us great food, culture, and they activate our streets. And that's what Los Angeles is. It's a Los Angeles that's moving in a direction that accepts all, that is diverse, and we're moving forwards, a Los Angeles that continues to activate our streets throughout the city. And so I think what we have come up with today is a great balance with all the different input that we've gone over the last five years that we've introduced this. And that balance is that first, the consumers will now know what they're eating by getting a health permit by the county. Secondly, our vendors win, because they now have the opportunity to come out of the shadows and not be chased by police everywhere they go. And lastly, our small businesses benefit, because they also, too, know what the rules are. And I think what we have embedded in this helps protect small businesses as well as we move forward. And I know that has been one of the biggest issues in finally coming up with something that makes sense. So over the last five years, we've had a lot of input, and I think what we have today is a product that is the city's first-ever street vending program. And while we learned from other cities, while we saw other cities and what they did, I think this is a model of what's possible throughout the nation. So I want to thank Mr. Price for your hard work and shepherding this through. It's not easy, and certainly was a difficult task to get us here. Thank you so much, and you and your staff for your hard work. Mr. Busciano, who gave it an additional spark and attention at the right time when they needed it, when our president was now more going after our immigrant population, you saw the need to step up and say, you know what, these vendors are asking us to legalize them and to give them regulations, and you stepped up at the right time to move this forward. Mr. O'Farrell, you've always been concerned about the parks and what happens at the parks, and making sure that there is that balance at the parks, and through your committee and the work you did, you give great input as well. And this whole council throughout this process has given input, so thank you all very much. We should all be very, very proud of what we've done here today. We're allowing people to provide for their families, to add to the City of Los Angeles in a very positive way. And it was a long time coming, but through all this, we're going to say that the City of Los Angeles, once again, is stepping forward to provide for all and leave no one behind. Congratulations. Felicidades.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance has been a long time coming. But quite frankly, in my opinion, not long enough. We were close, from my perspective. And where we were working around this horseshoe, this is a very delicate and sensitive and critical piece of legislation to get done right. We saw what happened, in fact, with Prop D, where it was, when I say rushed, because we didn't have the enforcement mechanism completely in place, and we turned around. And now, today, we're still paying the price to try to go after those and have an enforcement and regulation arm to protect the communities. I think we were close, and where we've been working on this for so long, but then we were rushed at the end because of what the state did. And unfortunately, far too often, the state, I think, has an overreach and local control, where it's up to municipalities, and particularly since we were already working on what I consider a very good piece of legislation that wasn't quite done. Having said that, I am confident that this body, over the next year, before this actually takes effect, can work out that enforcement piece. And so I'm a yes vote on this for that reason, because I have full faith and confidence that we can get it right. It's just unfortunate that the state has pushed the timeline up, because I thought we were so close, and actually having a comprehensive piece of legislation with the enforcement tools in place out of the gate. And so while that's not yet the case, I know we'll be there at the right time. And so I want to thank you, particularly Mr. Price and the others who've been leading this effort to get it done right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today's a banner day, and I want to particularly, I mean, thank everyone who's been part of this to make this happen, particularly Mr. Price. We did a joint hearing yesterday with Public Works, which I chair, Parks, which Mr. O'Farrell chairs, and Economic Development, which Mr. Price chairs. But Mr. Price has really been pushing this through, and I'm very grateful for that, because this has been a long road and a difficult road to get here, and it was frankly, it was made much more difficult by the state bill that ripped away our local control. And again, I'm not happy about the state bill that did that, because we had other mechanisms and tools that we could have made this even better, but we deal, we've got to play the cards that we've been dealt, and we're going to make the best of it, because we need to have regulations in place by January, and the way we're putting this in place, a permit system in place by the following year. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and that following year, as Mr. Englander was mentioning, in terms of enforcement. The other piece I worry about in terms of is the cost. We've got some cost-benefit analysis that tells us how much enforcement's going to cost, but the real cost is also going to be in how much it is to make a permit. And while we generally strive for cost recovery, we need to make sure that these permits don't cost so much that they're burdensome for the street vendors. Because the whole purpose of this is we want to lift people up and give new entrepreneurs a chance to be on our streets and to create these businesses, and that is a wonderful thing, and we need to make sure that the process doesn't end today. This is a major step, and today's a milestone, because no longer can we say of the 10 major cities that Los Angeles is last, and we're not the ones who've legalized street vending. I mean, that was frankly, an embarrassment, that we were, of all the major cities, the one city that didn't have street vending. So we can now, we can put that black mark behind us, but we have real work in front of us to make this process work for our communities, to live within the very restricted confines of the state bill, to create a permit that will get as much cost recovery as we can, but that will not be burdensome on our vendors, who want that permit for legitimacy, but don't want it to be an albatross or an anchor that brings you down. So we have a lot of careful balancing acts to do over the course of this next year. I'm confident that we can do it, but the hard work is beginning today. But nonetheless, today's a day to celebrate, it's a major milestone, and I want to congratulate everyone who's worked on this, and congratulate the folks who are here in support of legalizing street vending, because that's what we are doing today. And I urge an I-vote. Thank you.
Mr. Busciano.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We have come a long way to get to this point, colleagues. Let's look at Los Angeles. Los Angeles has been the only major city that prohibits vending leading up to today in every type, 24 hours a day, throughout the entire city of 11,000 miles of sidewalks. So we have asked ourselves, a core question this body has asked ourselves, whether vending poses a threat so grave to public health, safety, and welfare, that it's worth continuing to expend limited police and prosecutorial resources enforcing a citywide ban on all sidewalks at all times? And we don't believe it does, clearly. The ban on vending leading up to today has not worked, it's been a free-for-all. There is clearly a demand in this city. There's obvious, evidently, there's thousands, 20,000 vendors today, so the point where enforcement clearly did not work. When people are purchasing goods and food, we know that it's part of our local economy. And if we, as a body, an elected body, we can regulate tech companies that come to this city, we then have an opportunity to regulate and do the same for the street vendor. So I want to thank our business partners that have helped us get to this point. I want to thank the advocates, I want to thank also cities who have led this effort and have taught us how to do the right thing. Look at Portland, we've looked at San Francisco. We've also looked at an ordinance that's before us that we can be able to enforce, because without enforcement, we will then revert to a free-for-all. What we're going to do here today is embrace those who do want to follow the rules, and those who don't want to follow the rules will be held accountable. And lastly, if you look at all the most visited cities in the world, they have a vibrant street food scene, and here in Los Angeles, we embrace that street food culture. I do want to thank particularly our dear friend Rudy Espinosa. Rudy, come on, give him a round of applause. Rudy? Rudy has been, this man here, to all of our vendors, has been a champion for street vendors throughout this entire region, and I want to say, the state of California. He has been your champion. Rudy es tu campeón. So... Mr., to my Latino brothers and sisters on the council, I hope I don't embarrass you, but let me say this. Y hoy la venta ambulante en Los Ángeles se hará legal. And thanks to each and every one of you to do that. Carival? Carival. We have here before you, Carinal. Carinal es tu campeón. So Carinal, good job. Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, if everybody would please take their seats. Everybody, no, everybody, please take their seats. Mr. Price to close.
I respectfully ask you your I-vote.
All right. With that said, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 i's.
That is approved. Okay, Mr. Price, again, congratulations to all of the members that worked so hard on this issue. We're going to do multiple comment. I'd like to call up Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you have Items 6, 10, 12, 16, 17, 18, and general public comment.
Thank you.
What, Mr. Previn, why don't you wait? Okay, people, shh. Okay, we have, in fact, Mr. Previn, why don't we let them leave? We have a lot of people that are leaving the chambers, and I want to make sure that we hear what you have to say, so we'll allow them a moment to exit the council chambers, and then you'll be on the clock. Mr. Englander.
I ask Item 14, fourth with.
Item 14, fourth with. So it's...
Oh. We haven't taken it up yet, so when the item comes.
It's held by card. Okay, I've got it, I made a note. For those of you watching on Channel 35, when the chambers clears, we will resume council. Okay, Mr. Previn, I think we can... Okay, Mr. Previn, I think we can, Mr. Previn, the floor is yours, Mr. Previn.
See, see Mitch, Team Weezer, man. Team Weezer.
Mr. Previn?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and that is a very touching bit of business to get that finally underway for the Street Vendadores. I appreciate it. It took obviously far too long, and that is, the retraçar on that was just endless. But, but thank God, something is on the books, and will be completed after months of further deliberation, embarrassingly. I just want to say, thank you for the lighting operations today. You've got, in my district, item six and 10 are some lighting districts, and I just want to make sure that people know January 23rd is the hearing, if you want to protest at all on those. They're going to upcharge people to get those new lights in, so just be clear if you're for or against it. And 16 and 17, once again, thank you for the holiday string lighting. We've got string lighting in CD1 and some other kind of lighting in CD11. Now, CD1 has got $1,000 from Mr. Sadio for the lighting, and Bonin has come up with 20, because he comes from a nicer district where they have a little more money lying around. So anyway, it's great to get the lighting going. And 12, 12 is an important one. Here you've got the Department of Water and Power have glanced at their Arizona contract. Now, I know that sends people like Rue up, because they're worried, are we still doing business with Arizona? What about doing business with Arizona regarding TASER, where Englander went and took donations during a procurement? And then, are we ever going to get our six or $7 million back for the body worn cams that came into the world with a big splash, thanks to LA? And then, one day later, they announced, hey, rebates for everybody else. So we want our money back, because Englander was on the dole there. And Arnie Bergoff, who, I don't know if he left or not, he was here with the Vendadores today. If they don't represent TASER, then say so. It's Axon, by the way, and he claimed that they didn't represent the 4,400, literally TASERS, those things that the public didn't hear about or want, because they don't work for people in a homeless crisis. They cause liability, it's a disaster, sir. Very, very, very bad. That said, thanks to Corretts for speaking out against nuclear proliferation all over the world. He also is a leader, and so is Bonin, by the way. And both of them are leaders when it comes to clean money, which is why I'm so happy that we're going to talk a little bit, just figure out, do we want to limit or restrict the way that we distribute the, the matching funds? We want to make sure that all groups don't...
That sounds more like general public comment, it's not on the agenda items you signed.
Go back to, let me go back to the agenda item quickly and try to finish up. And by the way, I just want to say, regarding the agenda, I was a little puzzled why so many groups followed the Vendadores who had to get back to work. When we hold people up, like, now, to be fair, we're having a celebration on the lawn, and this is historic, so I will give you that, so those things fight one another. I was wondering, these poor people have work to do, why are they sitting here? Let's go to the general public comment, if you like, sir. I don't want to, I don't want to twist your arm. The general public comment today has to be, just a final circling, over how concerned I am that Mitch Englander has stepped away from his role and is going to be wiring up as many little things as he possibly can. That's why I'm shouting it out like crazy, because he's been doing it for years, and all of you take cover when he's the kind of pointy part of the thing that's nailing the public. And so, now that he's gone, we have to watch him very, very closely. It's not that he's a bad guy, he played a role here, which is to be the very, very bad guy who took money from all sorts of characters. His uncle is one of the biggest lobbies. I assume he's going to circle back and become the Englander and Englander Canavie and Allen pretty soon, once he gets, washes his hands over at Lewicki with the AEG and all that money. Look, this is how City Hall works, it's not your fault, sir. And by the way, it's not Ricardo Lara's fault that it took her, Mr. Price and all the other people so long to get a credible thing. And when I say that I'm happy for the Vendadores, I'm happy that they're not going to be harassed by the ACE Administrative Citation Enforcement Program that Englander put...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh, you want to make your way towards the center aisle, where you have items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 13, and then your general public comment?
Street lighting, street lighting, street lighting, street lighting. Actually, you do a good job on street lighting, although Mr. Weezer is shady, very, very shady. I'd like to say hi to all the FBI agents.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you want to go to your general public comment? Okay, let's give him his general public. Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
I'm telling you right now, that Weezer leaves because he's afraid of the FBI. He's afraid of them, and I just want you to know that we're now going to have the largest open-air cell place in Southern California to buy marijuana. And believe me, eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, 10-year-olds, everybody's going to be buying marijuana. Everybody is going to be buying dope. Why do you think they call it dope? And as we, I just want you to know that the city is in terrible condition.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman, item six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and general public comment.
So, what is a lien? Why do we have liens in two different departments? One up in budget, and now one back to council chambers? I'll tell you why, because this city is hiding the truth, bringing distress to residents and the public.
Mr. Herman is no card on five, so you're on item six.
Item six, sir. 607 North Chestnut Avenue.
Street lighting?
Yeah, Chestnut. Then, since you don't want me to speak about that, Herb...
No, just speak on this item you signed up for.
Let me talk about necessary right-of-ways, just like we talked about on item two of street vending. Public safety, ladies and gentlemen, has always been an issue to address, but the settlement of Woollett versus Los Angeles apparently is not the city's greatest asset.
So I don't understand what item the speaker's on. Perhaps he can tell us.
You don't understand, sir, because you're not the chair.
No, Mr. Herman, just stay on the items.
Lord, let me continue, please, with my thought...
No, if you stay on the items, we will allow you to continue, yes.
I'm talking in regards to Zella Avenue Project, jackass. If I would be allowed by the city attorney and the city engineer to designate and make me the technical corrector of the so-called right-of-way, then I would have a purpose to know what the fuck I signed up to talk about, Mr. City Attorney? Where you at? Where you at? Where you at? Get focused. I'm focused until you provoke me. Now, at Eagle Rock Boulevard, as the jackass on a holiday tree. Well, I support holidays, because we like to drink and drive. I support all holidays, because I like to drive with no lights. I like beautiful projects in my community, so I could support the DUIs like Jose Weezer. So I know that Eagle Rock is in support of more holidays. I know that Eagle Rock is in support of more holidays. I realize Eagle Rock wants to support street lighting, and I realize, goddamn it, the city attorney looks like a fool. Now my general public comment. As you see, Mr. Weezer can't take it. He can't sit there and have criticism from you, the audience, the general public. But in regards to the undermining of businesses, do you have liability coverage for these vendors? Do you have liability coverage? Because the day I trip and fall, the day my service dog gets injured because vendors are blocking the goddamn sidewalk, for the record, I plan to sue the city and any individual and their capacity for provoking that type of issue. Businesspeople get permits to run a business. I'm going to sell my fucking pot cookies on the sidewalk, and fuck you! I have a right to get a permit and make sales and sell, 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 the way Herb smokes his cigarettes with those fucking yellow teeth.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gus, item six, seven, eight, 13, and then general public comment.
Councilmember Daniel Gus, I have the featured article on citywatchla.com this morning, and one of my items is an item sponsored by Mr. Weezer. Well, if Mr. Weezer has been stripped of his committee assignments, Mr. Wesson must immediately...
Mr. Gus, is that a, I don't know what item you're speaking to.
By Weezer.
Which one is that?
I'm not going to identify the number, check it on your...
No, I indicated to you what items...
Herb, Herb.
Mr. Gus, I indicated to you, I'm just trying to find the item that you're speaking on.
I'm speaking on the one, which is sponsored by Mr. Weezer. Since you don't provide paper agendas, you can't expect me to have a photographic memory.
Mr. Gus, Mr. City Attorney, I don't see that item.
Yes, it is. Not stopping my clock, I'm trying to speak on the item...
No, well, I don't, I don't see the item that you're referring to. So go ahead, Mr. Gus, go ahead.
With all due respect, Herb, if you stripped wisely, Mr. Weezer, of that item number, you should strip him of all items that he's sponsoring before this body. Do you not take seriously the FBI investigation?
Mr. Gus, let's speak to the items. I told you, item six, seven, eight, and item 13.
I believe nine was sponsored by Weezer, was it not, Mr. Wesson?
As far as I know, that is, that is not his item.
Well, another example...
Those are street lighting items.
It's another example of city council not providing paper agendas, so I can...
No, but, Mr. Gus, please, man, just speak on, you signed up to speak on these items. Do you want to just go to your general public comment? We can do that.
I would like to use my last 60 seconds before general comment to speak about the item by Weezer, and any item by Weezer, since your system keeps making mistakes.
Mr. Gus, I gave you the items that you signed up for.
Then give me a, give me a paper agenda, so I can identify for you.
No, speak to those items. Okay, let's give Mr. Gus his general public comment.
Ah, you see, you see, now we'll talk about Mrs. Weezer. You made a grievous and expensive mistake a week ago today by preventing me from speaking about city council candidate Rochelle Weezer and your criminal son and his criminal activity. He's employed here as your floor director, he committed voter fraud. In about a week or so, you're going to get sued, and just wait till I get you under deposition, Herb, and Streffan, and Englander, just wait for that. So, Mrs. Weezer dropped out of the city council race for that job in my article featured on City Watch today, the top article. She's married for 19 years and had four children, never changed her name to Weezer until a few months ago. It was a fraud upon the people, a bigger fraud. Over the past 17 years, Rochelle Weezer had an active law license for 10 months out of 17 years. This woman, that criminal couple, has tried to put a fraud on the city. She hasn't been a Weezer, she hasn't been an attorney, and I'll see you in depositions.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Spindler, item six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 through... 16 through 18.
That's right. We're here to talk about the gangster himself. No, no, not, not Herman, Jason Wesson, no, he got a bigger criminal. I deeply respect the items under Jose Weezer's jurisdiction, fool. Yes, sir, like 1A5G, cheaper gangster, 607 North Chestnut? Holy shit! Now, what are we going to do with the FBI on that list? That's right, it's going to go down in the fucking flames.
So, we're not really speaking on the agenda items, is the point, Mr. Spindler?
Old head, I'm talking here, fool, 607 North Chestnut, 93240. I demand justice, this motherfucker, get this lien off me, that Jose Weezer and his goddamn liens, going out and text messaging me to come out and suck his dick, now I will not pay his lien!
So, Mr. Spindler, there are no liens open to comment on the agenda?
Mr. Spindler, you, you signed up to speak on street lighting items. No, Mr., let's give Mr., Mr., Mr. Spindler, please get back on the agenda. Okay, give him his one minute for general public comment, so he can speak to whatever he'd like to.
We all niggas, I know I'm a nigger, but your biggest nigger's Jose Weezer. Did you know his wife never used his last name? Those are four kids, and she'll rios. She only became a Weezer for one reason, to wheezy sleazy her way to those campaign donations, according to the IRS database. I know, I know about the money laundering, it used to be legal. Now Mitchell Englander's over there talking to Jose Weezer in the corner, making a deal with him. Don't make a deal with Mitchell Englander, he gonna wind up like Manafort. We call him Manafort Englander here in LA. He's a motherfucker, don't trust him. Just go back and trust Jose Weezer. I'm on Team Weezer. We will do one of two things, we will go to heaven, and we'll burn in hell together. Fuck him, that big son of a bitch and his fat cunt!
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spindler, thank you, your time's expired. Thank you, please take your seat, Mr. Spindler, thank you. Mr. Spindler, please take your seat, you're disturbing the meeting, please take a seat. All right. We'll vote now on item six through 18. You have that? Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, Mr. Englander, let's move item 14, fourth with. Now we're going to move to general public comment. Hey, Ms. Martinez? Could we...
And, Mr. President, while Ms. Martinez is coming up, I have a brief announcement. The TFR hearing for the Hollywood El Centro project located at 6211 Delong Pri, council file 18-1096, is being moved to November 30th. That is consistent with the amendment to move it, the item, from the 28th to the 30th that a council adopted last week.
Okay, let's move on to general public comment. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, just for the record, I couldn't hear anything the city attorney was saying, because Mr. Herman was making various noises, not animal noises this time, but other noises, so it was impossible to hear.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corretts, that's been noted, Mr. Herman, you've been warned. The first speaker, general public comment, is Samaidi Sanchez, are you here? Nobody here by that name? Merced Cortez? Merced Cortez? Nobody here? Christine Rudkels? Christine, anybody here with that name? Guadalupe Gil? Q? Alejandro Rodriguez? Kevin Went? Avron Farley? You want to come up, sir? Are you Mr. Farley?
Price, Price.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Kevin Warden Price.
No, there's no one here by that name, but if you wish to speak to your public comment, come on up. Come on up. Come on up! You have one minute. Uh, is there a Mr. Farley here? Okay, then you're next. Go ahead, sir, say your, please... Say your name, sir. You have one minute of a general public comment.
My name is Kevin Warden Price at Africa Town Coalition. And I was here earlier, because, you know, the chairman was here, Herb Wesson, and people that had, you know, dealt with number 2, item number 2. They're gone now, but I guess that's cool. So, basically, what we wanted to share, the Africa Town Coalition, is that, you know, we're asking that the ban be lifted from, uh, La Murt Park slash Africa Town. Uh, this is an unfair ban, and it is something that interferes with our cultural activity that we have in this park every Sunday. Uh, this is a village community, village-type of community. We have a village-type of vending system. And, uh, the, what I have heard in regards to this new, um... bill for vending is not going to work for Africa Town. I mean, it's really unfortunate he left. This is really disrespectful, because I came here specifically to talk to Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. ... Sir, you're... Well, thank you very much, have a good day. Mr. Farley, are you next? Thank you very much, sir. Sir? Sir, your time is up, you need to sit down. Thank you very much, your minute is up. Mr. Farley? Mr. Farley?
Farley, from Africa Town Coalition. I see that Herb Wesson walked out. We were supposed to be talking about lifting this ban on a, on a vending in La Murt Park, Africa Town. So we want to know why they need to lift a ban. It's all, uh, people who, uh, have a livelihood, who, 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 then have a livelihood, who needs to, need that. So keep this damn, uh, shit off the, the ban. Keep that ban, lift the ban. So when you come back, whenever the next one is, with Herb Wesson, they got to be here next time. He's a, he represents that district, so... I don't know why the hell they... We come up here and he left, though, so... So I would tell everybody, it's, it'd be accountable for it. Always just go to, tell him that this... He's a fucking fool for not being here.
Thank you very much. The next speaker...
And the people have a lot...
Thank you very much, your... Uh, the next speaker is Ken Simpson. Ken, are you here? There's no one here by that name. Uh, Madam Clerk, that concludes general public comment.
Counsel has motions proposing a referral.
Members, are there any announcements? Many announcements? Ms. Jo, you have any announcements? No? Can we all rise for adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions, Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we rise and adjourn in memory of San Pedro legend, NBA All-Star, Willie Nalls. Willie Nalls died peacefully last Thursday at his home in Laguna Nigal at age 84, after an eight-year battle with a rare condition that affected his lung capacity. A native of Dallas, who moved to San Pedro when he was nine. He would be a four-time All-Star during a 10-year NBA career, in which he averaged 15.8 points and 9.1 rebounds per game. He also called the San Pedro Boys Club "his safe haven." He learned to play basketball at the San Pedro Boys Club. He loved Major League Baseball as a child and in high school, was originally on track to play this sport professionally. But the 6'6", 225-pound athlete wound up turning into basketball and becoming an All-American at UCLA under legendary coach John Wooden. Over the course of his career, he would play for the St. Louis Hawks, before the team relocated Atlanta, the Boston Celtics, and the New York Knicks. While he had a very successful career in basketball, he'd be most remembered for his leadership as an African American in professional sports, for his integration efforts in the NBA. Nalls helped integrate the bus, the team road, on as well as the, uh, the theater, where they watched the movie, and the hotel, where they stayed together. He was a member of the first all-black starting lineup in integrated professional sports history. He became the Knicks captain in the early 1960s, the first black athlete to hold such a post for any team in a major American sport. Willie Nalls returned to LA after retiring, following the Clip, the Celtics' 1966 championship, completing his undergraduate degree at UCLA. He was voted into the school's Athletics Hall of Fame in 1986 and remained an active supporter of his alma mater, serving on the Board of Directors of the UCLA Alumni Association, becoming the school's first basketball alumnus to endow a scholarship for the basketball program. Willie Nalls spent the final five decades of his life helping underserved youth through a nonprofit organization he founded, and became a minister, who wrote eight books to inspire others. Willie Nalls is survived by his loving wife of 40 years, Anne Van De Water Nalls, and his children, Lisa Shannon, Jonah, and Malachia, Michaela, and six grandchildren. So he was truly a life hero for all of us, specifically within the NBA community and the San Pedro community. May he rest in peace, and may his legacy live on. Willie Nalls, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruinfield. I'm sorry, Mr. Joe Buscaino. Our next adjourned motion, Mr. O'Farrell? Mr. Corretts?
Not an adjourned motion, but I have to keep putting this on the record. Uh, Mr. Herman played music throughout the, um... adjourn in the memory, as well as snorting like a pig.
I, I heard it, too. I found it very distracting.
Well, it's obvious this person has absolutely no respect for human life, so, uh, you know, again, the continued disruption of Mr. Herman and his friends, um, are disgraceful. So any other adjourned motions? Seeing none? This morning is adjourned. Thank you very much.